It's time. You guys ready? Let's go.
Yeah.
Everybody leave, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Okay. Kyle and Brian, we want to talk about purchasing piping for Center Street project, which we brought up at the last meeting after I had several phone calls and found out there was critical shortages of that pipe. So you guys have done some work. Let us know.
So just quickly, briefly, we acted on such as far as inventory and everything else because we knew that the, you know, Tony Bond stated that there could be a delay in getting product. It's one of the reasons why things got moved as such into the springtime. So we did call up manufacturers, Corin Maine, Schmitz, and ESP, and did get pricing from those three, which fell under our estimate because it's under 35,000. As of right now, everybody does have it in stock. It is American-made. It will fall under, I believe, so the invoice is such with the decision that's made of the vendor that we go with that will fall under the Harper money. And the other concern was is making sure that we were able to get it here before there's any more increases in product.
Or shortages.
Or shortage. So we did get the three pricing, and again, I want to thank both Brian and Brian for working on this.
Yeah, I spoke to Dave Companion. He kind of gave me a roadmap of the situation. And he did acknowledge there's a big shortage, but he gave me two of these sources, ESP and Schmitz. So that's where I got those bids from.
Yep. So Corin Maine does have it in stock. They are the cheapest bid for 4105 linear foot, which then will bring the total cost, what we need for the eight-inch piping, to 25,451. And we're talking with Brian. It's his recommendation that we could go with Corin Maine.
There's no shipping charge?
No shipping charge. The half of the stock came in at the lowest price.
But what we should do... You know, I was pushing this so we could get to vote on this soon. And we should have some kind of condition where if circumstances change since Tuesday, we go to the next bid, like if Corin Maine doesn't have it in the yard anymore and says there's like, all of a sudden, there's a two or three-month shipping.
Sorry. I'm looking at the Corin Maine bid, and it's the most expensive one at 28,000.
There's a, I have a hybrid on there that I was just getting for my own.
Yeah.
Take off that for $1,003.
Okay, great. Thanks. Thanks. Clarify.
So the lead time with ESP and Schmitz was a couple of weeks. And Corin Maine had it in-house, so we should maybe say if Corin Maine can't get it to us in, what, three weeks, then we go to the next.
Name.
Subject to Brian's verification, then we go to the second bid, which is Schmitz. And Schmitz has all sorts of ancillary inventory for the valves and the mechanical joint fittings and the hydrants. That is not sensitive to this long lead time according to their sales rep.
So my question was, is all that interchangeable? We go with Corin Maine, and we have another vendor for all the fixtures and stuff.
Yeah, it's all standard.
It's all standard.
Class 52, eight-inch ductile iron.
So the rarity was the eight-inch ductile iron and kind of hydrants, but not this.
Hydrants are around. They just went up in price like everything else.
What happened is the raw materials are sourced from your bank because of the war. There's a really long lead time, so they make this stuff out of scrap iron, which takes longer, and there's quite a demand, et cetera.
I just have a question on the, so you're doing the Schmidt asset contingency. What is that price?
42...
25,604.
4267 linear foot.
200.
Total was 25,604.
604.
And then he told me delivery charges were 235 bucks.
In addition to the 604? Yes.
That's just verbal. I don't think I have.
And what was it to a delivery?
235 dollars.
Okay, so my question is, if you are, if the board is considering this with Corin Maine and a second can go into the next one with a contingency on delivery date, are you setting a specific delivery date?
I said three weeks.
Because you really need a good reason to not.
Right. I just put three weeks out there if you want to extend it.
It's, I don't know. I'm just asking the question because I just know that.
We need a good paid reason. Yeah, exactly.
You need a really good reason to not take the lowest bidder.
So if you want to make it five or six weeks?
I think six weeks is reasonable. Within six weeks, I mean, I don't think it'll take that long based on what they were saying. It sounds like we'll have it here next week.
Yeah.
But just in case, six weeks is.
So six weeks would be Friday, March 3rd.
And this would all be stored down at the water plant until we start construction?
No, we're going, we're looking, Brian and I, when it's after today, we'll get with Corin Maine. And I want to look at how these things are packaged. I know they're going to obviously be wrapped and stickered. And how they're unloaded, our first places that we're looking at is wastewater plant.
Okay.
Only because we have so much going on out to, you know, we're trying to clean up out to the highway on the back part where the compost is going and try to get, try and stay ahead of that so we're not. And they do, they just, that can be a dump ball down there, and I don't want to turn it into that. And there's plenty of room down to where we can split it up. And plus, it's on camera.
Yeah.
And I like the fact it's on blacktop, so when we start getting into, you know, picking the material for the project, then it'll be a lot easier.
Great. Okay.
All right. I'd like to make a motion that we go with Corin Maine as our first supplier for the eight-inch diameter class 52 ductile iron water main pipe with a contingency of waiting until six, for six weeks to back up with Schmitz being the next one at 4267 for linear feet.
Could I amend that? I'll just go down the ladder. Same with the third supplier. If neither one of the top two can supply in that same time period, then we could go to the third bid, which is also a really good bid.
Is there another six-week wait after the second?
No, there's not in six weeks in succession. It's just that the first two have to pledge that they're going to get it in that time period. You see what I mean?
Okay. We need to fight. All right. Second?
Second.
Thank you, lady. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Stain?
Yeah, Bob Stain.
Very good.
What am I voting on?
Let's get some fight. All right. Next item on the agenda is wastewater treatment plant, 0% financing.
I'm going to leave, guys.
Bye, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Give me a call if you need anything.
Brian, thank you for everything.
Thanks, Brian.
All right. So we received a letter from EFC wanting us to know if we would move forward on either the Village of Reinbeck to proceed with the CWS RF financing, even in the absence of a grant. If so, what date do you anticipate financing? And option two, only upon receipt of a WIA grant. Okay? So what I have found out and what I've shared with you all is that if you think about the current grant application, which we did not get, right, we can now apply for a 0% financing. If we do apply for the 0% financing, we have to close, then we will be assigned a loan advisor, and we have to close on that loan by October 1st.
So we actually have to take the money by October 1st?
We actually have to close. That's like your mortgage.
Yeah, yeah.
Close your house.
So we actually have to take the money.
You close on the loans, you now have the money, right?
Which is short-term financing.
For a project that I have heard a lot about, but I haven't, that we have yet to sort of see anything about.
Actually, no, we presented this a long time ago. There was a binder, 31-page binder book, the items on the second paragraph of the contract, which we went over. I have my notes here as to how I presented it.
Yeah.
We all were in, I brought the binder book to the discussion, and we all, and you were all given the binder book, so.
Okay, so that conversation happened in late 2020 because I remember I was brand new to the board.
Right.
Okay.
So we're just, you know, it's budget season now. We're going to rekindle the discussion. I've told you guys multiple times that we need to perhaps paradigm the project. So there's, I'm not sure what you're getting at.
I'm getting at the idea that like, we're doing the Center Street project. We're talking about this big water project.
No, we're doing the water project.
We're doing the water projects, not just talking about it. I'm just trying to figure out, literally just in terms of the bandwidth that like this little building has to be managing all of these massive projects, and they all seem to be happening all at once. And that's fine. I just think it's worth the conversation before we agree to take a whole bunch of money from the state. And yes, it's interest-free, so we could just, the minute they hand it to us, start giving it back to them at no cost to us. But there is kind of a question, and I'm glad that you saved, thank you, Kyle, of like, do we have the bandwidth for this? And have we had a conversation about sewer rates as it relates to taking this much money and doing a big project like this?
And just so you know, that's in front of us. Like, you know, I was about, you know, as I said, to bring this up in maybe 60 days, 90 days.
Yeah. No, I get that, but I just wanted to have the conversation before we agreed to take.
There's no commitment to just say picking a date that we're going to close on the financing. There's no, if we don't commit, we stand in the back of the line on the IUP list for free interest rates, and we kind of have to resubmit for the annual pool, as the mayor was saying. So there's really no, and I've been told this by the consultant that we hired, that there's absolutely no risk in committing to this. But I would like Kyle to.
Other than the fact that we take the money and then we're responsible for all of that money.
Well, we're not going to, we're not going to be half-loaded with information at that point by, you know, by July. We're all going to be fully aware as to the scope.
Right. So we're agreeing to take the money before we've had the conversations as to the full scope of the project.
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
And so like, so could we decide come budget season, we look at the numbers, and we're like, oh my God, we can't take on the wastewater treatment plant project? We're going to need to back out of the 0% financing?
We can back out of it.
Yes.
Right? But we would have started the process of closing on this loan. And that's going to be work on Karen to be able to do.
Okay.
Because that will start as soon as we let them know. Because they've already started with the mess of municipalities who have said they want to do this and those who have dumped. Now, just to add to this, the governor put in $500 million in the state budget, which was approved for infrastructure improvements, which includes water and wastewater.
Right.
There is a very good probability that there'll be another round of WIA grants this year, but it hasn't been announced. And we don't know the terms of that announcement going forward, so.
Well, and rumor has it that they're going to be prioritizing systems that are extending wastewater to residential areas in order to build more housing.
We, we don't know, we don't know the criteria of what.
Yeah, we have a strong, what I've been told is we have a strong score because the plant, you know, whatever we do is going to make the plant fit for another 40 years. We have a strong argument with the ultraviolet, the ultraviolet ballast and things that are going to fry out and.
It's not expanding the, it's not expanding capacity. It's just updating the plant to be functional now.
Right. And I wouldn't say we have a strong score. According to them, we have an average score, which was 47, right, on our previous grant application.
Right.
And that's average. And the reason we got the 0% is because the cutoff, or the 43 or 47, whatever, the cutoff was there for those municipalities to also be offered the 0%. So we're being offered because of where we, where the cutoff line. The cutoff line, if, let's just say, for instance, the next round of WIA comes out, and it is another 0%, they may, that line may go up or down as to where that cutoff will be. So it's intuitive upon us also, if we do reapply, have the postmortem, redefine what our loan is, redefine what our grant application is, and resubmit to hopefully improve our score. The higher our score, the better it is will be to A, be accepted, and B, also whatever financing that the gap.
These are not mutually exclusive issues. Applying for the grant next year, it does not.
Okay.
I didn't say it would affect this decision. I didn't say that.
But that's a separate issue. Like, of course, we can do that.
I think we're all just playing a little catch-up on like.
Like, you very.
No, I just.
Yeah, you very clearly know all of this.
That's a huge fact.
Yeah, no, no, no. But like, you know all of this in your head, and like, this is the first time.
And that's why I'm sharing it with you.
Right. Now. Yeah.
Yes, that's, we're deliberating.
Yes.
Yeah. The answer to your question, we can apply for the zero interest. We will have to start the process for the zero-interest loan.
Okay.
If we reapply for the grant and we get accepted for the grant, that gets put on the side. Or if we decide to say, we're out, we're out.
Okay.
But at some point in time, you're beyond the point of no return when you start to get closed ductile.
I get that.
Look, yeah, if we have a loan in hand, zero-interest loan in hand, it would be a mistake to let it go just upon whatever.
Right. Especially if we can say, thank you, but no thank you.
Karen and I were talking about this. What do we figure? Maybe just put July or August on the date.
So will they start the closing process before the time that we set? Like, if we say July or August, will they start the closing?
They want to start them pretty, they're working now with municipalities. They're trying to line up and figure out how many, quote, municipalities they have to work with, how many people they need to work with those municipalities. They are in the process of doing that.
But they're asking us when we want to close. And that's what I'm saying.
Right. I'm just confused. I'm confused between two dates, which is the October date and then the date that they're asking for. What's the difference between these two days?
I was told not to push the envelope on that by Robert.
Which means what?
So they want us to close by.
Robert is Delaware engineering.
Right.
Yeah, sometime before October.
They want us to close by October, but they also put in a letter, when do you think?
When do you want to close, which means.
With October the latest. Is that what you mean?
You can't, you have to close by.
Which means that we have to have our short-term. Now, don't forget, we've already passed the bond resolution. So we're.
I thought we already passed a bond resolution for the water grant.
No, we passed the bond resolution for wastewater.
We did.
Okay.
We needed to do that in order to apply for the grant, for the last grant.
Right.
I know this is complicated and.
Yeah.
So I guess my question is, are we, when are we locked in to not being able to accept a grant?
The October.
Like, do you know what I'm asking?
There'll be a new grant. In theory, there will be a new grant round this year.
Right.
It has not been announced.
But if, once we close on the loan, though, are we then percluded from?
No. I would not like, I would prefer not to close on the loan before, like, the May-June timeframe, when we anticipate the announcement for the new WIA round.
Okay. And then the deadline, and then the deadline for the grant is September, correct?
It was last year, but it changed. We kind of got surprised last year. Remember, we had to have that special weekend.
Wait a second. This is what I'm not understanding. You just said the drop dead leaf, not the date for closing is October, and now you're talking about something in next spring. What are the two? I don't understand. There are two different options.
No, no, no. This spring, not next spring, this coming spring.
Right.
All right.
Oh, financing.
This coming spring is when we anticipate, and the word is anticipate.
Got it. Got it. Got it. Okay. I thought you were talking about spring 2020.
So why don't we push closing to the end of the summer?
All right. How about August?
Yeah, I would say August 1st.
I mean, it's like, as late as possible.
Talk about bandwidth. We need time to get this sorted out.
No, what do you, and like, Gary, you're saying that they're going to start the process of closing when we give them this decision of today. What if we made it September? One month, I mean.
Well, Robert didn't want us to push it close to October.
I mean, as close as we can to get into know if we're going to get another grant.
I mean, if they say that they're going to give it to us, it doesn't matter. Like, what is Robert concerned about? And also, I really do want to hear from Kyle whether.
Yeah, I want Kyle to, and I, to talk about how important it is just to do the project and, you know, with 0% financing in our back pocket.
I mean, when, obviously, I came into this, like, I found that May 9th hire date was like, there's been a lot going on in this village prior to coming. So when we did get denied the grant, Brian and I, Brian, Akmo, we did sit down because my, my concern is, is that we applied for a grant for a reason. I don't want to stop the improvements and the upgrades of the plant that we need to do so we get caught behind the eight ball, and then, you know, things are breaking, and now, now it's just going to be a financial nightmare.
Right.
So we actually sat down and went over and started putting things in priority of what we want to do going into this budget year.
Yeah.
Of the things that we wanted to look at, that we knew that we had to replace, and the things that need to be, you know, to be upgraded. And then going up small and then hoping either getting this financing or a grant where we can just take the burden off a little bit, but keep moving forward, but continue going after the money that we need to fulfill the whole upgrades of the plant that we're looking at.
So.
Okay, so like, obviously, this is needed. We've heard for years now that this is super needed. Do we have the bandwidth to do this between like you and the guys at the plant? You to manage the financing of this? Because like, this isn't just, you know, this isn't, I don't know, like, five bucks. This is like a huge, big deal.
Right. And my concern is, is two as well. As I say, you know, like, everybody's talking. If we agree on this zero financing, and then, like I said, in say, in May, hypothetically, the grant process comes out, and we do get accepted to the grant, are we going to be able to, you know, how does that work? Do we not get the grant because we took the zero financing? Do we?
No. I mean, it doesn't work that.
You know, and if we do get the grant, can we back out of the zero financing, and when can we back out of? And I think that's what Karen.
Those are my same questions.
Karen and I talked too, it's like.
We want to back out before we close.
Yeah, that's right. So we, what this is saying is, we need to make up our mind if we're going to go forward with just 0% financing. I made up my mind when it was announced, but as a group, we need to make up our mind. Because I know that there's essential things that need to be done to the water plant.
So the one.
Wastewater plant.
The one question is, what's, what was the concern about pushing the deadline or our closing past August into September?
Or even October 25th?
I don't think there's really any.
So we should go as late as possible.
I think September is the late.
We may need to, all our notifications, like, you know, to go out, we may need, like, the 30 days. I mean, I'm not sure. We may need like a 30-day staple period and then.
Yeah, I think so.
Publishing, and so we probably will need 60 days for that, so maybe August is a better time.
We need, say, there's more for them, for them to do their planning, because there's a lot of work for them to help us get the 0% loan.
Who's them? Delaware engineering?
No, no. The financing arm of the state government.
Okay. Got it.
It's more of a date for them so that they can line up their plans.
Yeah, no, I get that.
But we still have, you know, we have to do it before October 1st.
Okay.
Right? We have to set, you know, that's, we have to make that decision.
So Robert at Delaware has an idea of what he really thinks are essential things. We, the three of us spoke, and we have an idea. We need to get together with Karen.
Because we know, obviously.
It's going on the project.
Yeah, going into budget, you know, wastewater, you know, fund balance and everything else. There's a lot of factors at play here that we can keep moving forward with the things that we want to get done without.
So I'd be able to question, if we go for 0% financing, how much are we going to go for?
That's the question.
That's the question.
I think we need to know that.
That's what we're going to do. Yeah.
But do we need to know that today?
We don't need to know today.
No, no, no. This is where we're going, like I said, we've already created what we think is the list of putting things in priority now. We'll put things into, you know, the amounts of the dollar amounts, and that's going to be, I believe, sitting down with Karen and knowing what we can do on a budget aspect of things, plus.
We'll need to know that.
Putting the dollar now on the zero financing loan.
If we send this letter in, they're going to reach out to Karen. The process is going to start. The first question they're going to ask is how much you want to borrow.
We can have that probably within.
Couple months.
Yeah.
It's part of the budget discussion.
Because that's important.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's what I intended all along.
Okay, one last question about the grant. So say, the grants are announced in May.
Uh, November, I think, is more realistic.
No, what they told me on the phone is probably May, June, we will hear.
Oh, there are two rounds?
Application.
Another round this year.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
There's 500 million.
I know you spoke to the EFC directly, and I did not.
There's 500 million in the budget that was approved for infrastructure improvement. They are waiting to hear from the governor on another WIA round.
Yeah.
Not committed. They are waiting. They anticipate it will be, but again, it's not committed.
But just theoretically, I'm just trying to think scenario-wise, say, it's announced in May or June, the deadline is in September, so we apply in September. Usually, you don't hear back for months.
Yeah.
So we've already closed on this 0% loan. We find out, say, in December, that, hey, you got this grant. Can we use the grant and then just use the 0% for the difference? Because usually, the grant.
The 0%, you're shaking your head yes, but it's only, we don't know the new terms of the new round. The new round may not, may or may not include 0% financing.
But we will have already got the 0%.
That's not true. We got, we're locked in.
No, no, no. I think the question Vanessa's asking is, if we have the 0% loan in place, what can we do with that money if we also receive a grant?
I don't know the answer to that.
Is that the question you're asking?
Right. Can we use the 0% loan to cover our match or something?
I don't know.
I don't know the answer to that.
So, and I don't know that you can change the scope of the work
Right.
once you apply for it, but I don't know how.
Right. We're going to have to make up our mind to move forward without a grant at some point.
Okay.
This is buying us time. If we go for the 0%, we're buying time.
Right.
Pause though, because you guys do on record right now have a resolution that says you are agreeing to go forward. It's, the language is vague. It doesn't have a date. It doesn't say 0% financing, but you have an existing resolution.
Right.
That was passed at the last board meeting.
Right.
So today, you basically either need to rescind that or amend.
That's right. So Gary talked to the EFC and found some subsequent information that the guy, the representative wanted is to sign that old form, which has the commitment date. I think that my resolution allows us to just choose a commitment date. So this, this resolution could just be for the commitment date.
And signing this form.
Yeah.
We need, it was signed by Delaware Engineering, did it before. They can't do that. We need to sign this level. Right?
But that's not.
Okay.
So it seems like we should sign it with the closing date of August 1st. And that seems like it gives you the stop.
Again, not to.
Well, you said there might be 60-day.
Yeah, not to complicate it, but are they doing, if they're doing all the closing, if it's, if it's internal with EFC? I mean, August 1st is a conservative good date if we have closing, if we have to post and publish and do all of that ourselves.
Okay.
But if EFC is doing it.
They're not going to create their own exigency and then pull it from us. You see what I mean? Like, if they create a delay, they're not going to say, oh, yeah, we, it's too late.
Well, yeah, if they're saying that we can close as late as October 1st, then I would imagine that all of the stuff that goes with that would be handled as part of that October 1st date. And so I mean, like.
Right.
I mean, if they say that we can close on October 1st, I see no reason.
By October.
By October, then I see no reason that we can't close on, like, say, September 30th. You know, I mean, like, I appreciate sort of your concerns, but like, if they say this is the date that you can close by, I don't see any reason to not take them.
I didn't ask Robert why. He just thought we should pull it in a little bit.
Well, you know, I mean, like, Robert just wants to start the work.
Don't forget, we're trying to, we're trying to appear like we really want the grant and all this. I mean, we're.
I mean, we do really want, I mean, like, yes, to have someone else pay for this much-needed work, I believe, like, I think we're all agreed on that process.
Okay.
The, yeah.
That's not what I think. Go ahead.
It's not what you think?
I think we're, I think we're showing the EFC that we're waffling with all these.
Well, we are waffling. The decision has, because the decision has to be made here. The decision has to be made is, you know, again, reapplying for the loan, which we needed to think, talk about and redefine and make sure what it is. Also, you know, they're asking us right now if we want to start the process for a 0% loan, knowing that there may be some other possibilities, which they're aware of.
Right.
I don't, I don't see the risk in signing this right now, and I don't see the risk in putting a date out of whatever it is, because this is for their planning purposes and for them to get started working with us.
Right. And then I think we have a lot of work to do in the meantime.
Absolutely. I agree. My only concern with this is when they start consulting with this, giving them an amount. That's my concern.
Right. If like, the next phone call is that, how much?
We'll know that in a couple of months through budget deliberation.
We need, because I'm, I would not like to go for X million and then only spend Y million, We need, I'm, I would not like to go for X million and then only spend Y million and then we get a grant and then we have to give money. I don't know how that works.
It doesn't work that way, so.
Yeah.
We're good.
What doesn't work, what way?
You're not committed to spending all that. You're just, your grant is proportionally reduced.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
Your grant or your 0% loan?
The 0% is up to 30 million.
Yeah.
Something like that, some crazy number like that. The grant is.
Is that how you view it?
Proportionally reduced.
Once we get the grant, if we don't, say we, the water treatment plant. We don't, we anticipated 6 million, we got 3.2, we end up only spending 5 million. Does the grant amount of the 3.2 get reduced?
No, so how it happened with the water was we got the grant and then we had our, we agreed for our short term financing and they took part of the short term financing upfront. They did the grant in the middle and then they did, they did the short term financing at the end. At the end of it, we had almost $300,000 left on EFC's side. So for the last two years, they have been paying the principal on our first two payments, on our first two principal, long term debt payments to draw that down. So they did, they don't give it back to you. They don't say, here, this is your money back. But they do amortize it and, and out and over the long term debt payment schedule.
So the grant can pay for the debt?
Not, no.
Okay.
Not the grant. The grants, the grants in the middle of the short term. They start with some of the short, I don't know what exactly the percentage is. It may be 25, 50 and 25. I'm not sure of that, but they start off with the short term. The grant portion of it is in the middle of the project and then when you use up that grant portion of it, then you're back to your short term and then it's lumped together and what, and then you go to long term funding for the amount that you committed to.
So we committed to 6 million for the water plant. And so even though the project was only 5 million, we're still committed to that extra million of short term of debt?
No, because we were, um, our long term was 3.75, 3.75 million.
Okay.
So, um, they took out the grant, um, I don't know, I think.
But that's the 6.5 million, you know, the combination of the two.
We came in a little lower. It was five something.
But definitely, I think that's a question Rick is asking. And correct me if I'm wrong, Rick. Your, the question you're asking is, we applied for, in water treatment plant, we got 3.2 million.
As a grant.
As a grant and we financed the 3.75.
3.75.
To give us the total amount of money. If we spend only.
That's like just shy of 7 million.
I know, if we spend only 5 million on the project, got to remember, the grant is awarded on the total scope of the project. 60% of the total scope. We got less than that. We got 3.2 million of our 6. whatever million that we applied for. If we're spending less, that grant amount that's in the middle, it stays at 3.2 and we are financed through, we have to pay that 3.2. That grant stays at 3.2 or because we spent less, does that get amortized to be lower?
It gets proportionally reduced from what.
I, I don't know the answer.
I don't know the answer either.
No, I'm, I've been told it gets proportionally reduced.
I don't know.
So.
That would be an EFC question.
So, so the bond gets proportionally reduced?
If we come in lower, then they're not going to keep the grant. It just gets proportionally reduced.
The grant gets proportionally reduced.
We do have to make up our mind by, remember I talked about the five year date? That's the date where we have, we, we go out to bid and we have an accepted bid. Now, at that point, you can't just say, oh yeah, no, we're going back. We're going, we're going to tighten our numbers and change the scope of this project.
Great.
But at this point, we're, yeah, at this point, we're not.
The only, the only thing is, Lydia, is if we don't, if we don't spend it, I mean, we're not, it's not going to be included in our long, when we change to long term funding from the short term funding.
You're only going to take long term debt for what we actually spent. Okay, that makes sense.
Right.
So I'm going to get back. I don't see a risk in signing this and putting an extended date on when we anticipate the financing to be able to do that. And in the meantime, we'll learn a lot about what's going on this year with the state grant money and what will be available to us.
And what we actually want to do.
And what we actually want to do.
How we're going to pay for it inside the water, wastewater.
Correct.
Yes.
Fund.
Remember, we did, we worked with Time Bond and did a rate adjustment for the water. We have not done that for wastewater.
Right. Okay, great.
So I think the deadline, the closing date should be September 1st.
Yeah.
As quick as possible, but it gives us a little wiggle of the law.
I totally follow that, yeah.
I'll take what I can get.
I mean, what are they going to say if we, if we.
I mean, they've, they've offered it to us.
Go through the process.
Yeah, like, I don't, I don't understand how it shows a lack of interest if we're just willing, if we just.
I like that, at September 1st, it kind of.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that I sign the form for the Clean Water Resolving Fund project for the water wastewater treatment plan upgrade. That we check the block, even in absolute of a grant or so, we anticipate what date we anticipate finding it, financing is September 1st.
Correct.
Okay.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. All right.
I still need you to amend or rescind this previous resolution.
So.
I think, I think we could just add this.
That's an amendment, yeah.
Yeah, it's an amendment.
That's what I propose, that there's any amendment.
So you're fine with the language as is?
I'm fine.
You're fine with the language of this resolution?
With this amendment.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to need that all very specifically written out so that I can.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, good.
Thank you. You finished with me?
No.
No, no, Karen.
You finished with me?
Probably.
I think so.
All right.
Thank you, Kyle.
Oh, Ted.
Thanks, Kyle.
Wait, I'd like to interject. I got a phone call this morning from Tom Legrand, just so everybody knows. Tom Legrand called me and he wants to repair the gate at Astor, free of charge for us.
Oh, that's nice.
That's nice.
Okay?
Yes.
Does anybody object?
No.
No.
He only asked that we deliver it to a shop.
Okay.
So he would like it as soon as you can. He wants to do the repair on our Astor.
I'll try to spin over now what it entails to get it off.
It's just bolted on.
Yeah.
Very simple.
All right.
I thought the bolts got ripped out when I got here.
No, no, that's.
I didn't think so.
Nothing I didn't even know other than this event.
All right, so just please deliver that to Tom Legrand.
Okay.
And thank you, Tom Legrand, for offering to repair our Astor Street grants.
Great.
Great.
Thanks, Kyle.
Yeah. Spectrum, you want to give?
So this is just an update and feel free to jump in because I just have jumbled notes here. I spoke to the Spectrum rep, Alex Kamarda, and as we discussed before, we have really good old, uh, old definition of gross revenue upon which we have a 5% rate. So because we, our definition is very broad, it includes not just non, uh, recurring revenues, but all sorts of other revenues that would, would be the pool that you multiply 5% by. So included in that is pay per view, shopping channels, advertising, late fees, equipment rental, installation fees and lease access fees. Which is like, for example, he said, equipment cable box revenue. So Alex agreed that we had really good gross revenue language and maybe that shouldn't be changed. Well, I'll get to that, but, um, so what he did say is when, when Redhook signed on, it was Alex's opinion that once they signed on to the, to the capital for Panda, that there's probably an IMA, and I've seen it before and I couldn't find it, that says that once that signatory is on board, it pools us all together as part of that. What was it, $54,000 or something? So in other words, he felt like Alex never intended to bring a draft to us for signature. But he thought we were kind of, when Robert signed it, it was sort of committing the six or seven of us to, to be part of that pool. So he said, Robert has an IMA. I don't know if you've seen it, Karen, because you started.
I have not seen your IMA.
So that's my next step is to get it from, from Robert.
So, so Alex was never expecting the bill to run back to be part of this agreement?
He's not shocked and he would probably say, oh, fine, let's sign on, right? But especially because the, the revenue language that he's proposing would give us less money, so. But he, he thought that that capital issue with Panda was already kind of booked, kind of committed by Redhook.
Is it, is it possible that we can be committed via the Redhook agreement for just the part that funds Panda? Because we want to fund Panda. I think we're all in agreement there. And then separately, we negotiate our renewed contract with our preferred 5% language.
Vanessa, here's the way I understand it from talking to both Alex and Robert prior to this. Once the PSC approves a Redhook contract, Spectrum will allocate the $54,000 to Panda.
Right.
So we're, hopefully, we're not holding up Panda anymore.
Okay.
But depending on what PSC approves, because of the other four municipalities are involved in this, in this process.
That's right.
So it's a TBD because it's depending on that contract going through with the PSC and getting approval.
But that's not waiting on us.
No.
Nobody's waiting on us.
Right now, nobody's waiting on us. The only advantage to us is Robert didn't want to approve an agreement for all five municipalities without us reviewing it and putting our name on it as well, which is fair.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, we didn't ask him to negotiate for us. It was, he took it upon himself to negotiate. Here's his best draft on what, what that would be with the 5% recurring revenue.
Can we then, if our contract is better than the one Robert has currently, can we roll over our contract but add some additional language that addresses the capital, the $54,000 capital cost issue?
See, I think that's, I gotta see the IMA because I think it's, I've seen this thing before. I remember eight years ago that there's some kind of agreement where the seven of us are in for capital contribution for Panda and it's not in this contract, so it must be in this IMA that.
So, so right, we just take our capital contribution out of the revenues that we're going to pay for Panda, basically.
We budget for it. It's a long item in our budget.
But, 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 but Spectrum sends us our money, we take that money and generally what we allocate it for is giving it to Panda.
It goes into revenue. It goes into the general fund. It's.
Then I'll have to not anticipate that much revenue.
Right.
And it's about 66,000.
So we take it all in as revenue and then we budget down. So no, we don't take it from here.
Yeah, we don't.
I don't think, I think they tag it on, they tag it on to the, they tag it on to the consumer's bill.
We're talking about two different things. One is the agreement with Spectrum, which we are trying to work through to get the revenue.
Right.
We have to do a second agreement with Panda based on their new projected rates that they're giving us when we go into the budget. Two separate things.
Right.
Totally different things.
I think that's our own done.
Don't confuse them because we, the Spectrum doesn't pay what we pay Panda and to be great to be here today.
Okay, so if we have a good contract with Spectrum, why don't we roll it over?
It rolls over automatically every year.
It automatically.
But it's better, it's better than the one that.
Yes.
That Robert negotiated.
For revenue, yes. Now, he gave me some revenue language. He says, I think this will help you quite a bit. And I sent it to our.
Who's he, Robert or Alex?
Alex. I haven't spoken to Robert yet.
Okay.
Okay, so he gave me a gross revenue definition and I sent it to our cable auditor and he said, do not sign this. So I haven't had that discussion with him as to why. It's probably better than the Redhook language, but it's apparently not as good as what we're, what we have now that rolls over automatically every year. So I'll, I'll get that back to you guys and.
Okay, cool.
And just one, my early conversation with Alex says, he told me, any changes to what the Redhook has could potentially drive up our franchise fee and be taxed back to our users.
I.
Right, but we're not suggesting that we change Redhook's agreement.
We're saying we just keep.
Yeah, goodbye.
I know, just.
Already.
My only concern is, does the Redhook agreement give our subscribers a better rate?
No, they're never going to reduce rates.
It's just a franchise, it's just a franchise rate.
So if we signed on to the Redhook gross revenue language, we would be subsidizing rate payers and their monthly bill would go down a tick.
So there, it is, there is a difference.
Oh.
They're not going to.
At the point of may.
They're passing everything along to the user.
By keeping what we have, our subscribers in the Village of Rhinebeck pay more.
But they keep paying the same.
They keep paying the same.
But we have an opportunity that we, the village takes less and the, and the cable subscribers.
And cable subscribers get a lower, slightly lower.
Which would really be subsidizing village coffers to help consumers pay their cable bill.
And I think that's the direction Redhook went.
Oh, well, that's like a whole different kettle of fish.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm trying to bring it up.
Okay. Sorry, I, I missed the conversation in December. Now, now I am caught up.
This is not simple stuff.
The question is, do we know what the impact on the bill is? I mean, is this a question of 25 cents or is it a question of?
So I figured.
$2?
I found a bill and I ran it by Alex, the Spectrum guy, and he said, okay, remember our auditor said we could save that we make 25 to 40% more with our revenue language?
Right.
He thinks it's more like 12 to 14 and that's sort of my, what I came up with with my back of the envelope because I found some old, it's not a bill, it's a justification of revenue and they itemize it. So.
So, so if we would only do like 10 to 15%.
We'd be forfeiting like, yeah, like seven or eight grand a year.
Okay, so seven or eight grand a year and then we subsidize village cable payers by seven or eight grand a year.
And let me, let me add this on. Subscribers are going down. The lower we can keep a rate, the higher, the more people may not leave and then the more revenue we get in, right? So it's based on customer subscriptions.
And is it only cable or are people also paying this if they only have, if they only have internet?
It's cable.
It's just cable?
This is cable.
Okay, so is people are like unplugging or whatever it's called?
Right, but you would, you would assume that since Spectrum is the only higher bandwidth, that they're not going to disappear on us.
There's other companies that want to come in and offer.
Well, in which privacy, people might just go fully wireless, you never know.
Well, we will.
So.
Oh, okay, sorry, let's talk about this.
This is, I think there's more work to be had here.
Yeah, I'll get some more information.
Because I really believe that, you know, we need to really consider the rate to our subscribers as well as well of the revenue.
The issue I have for you guys is should I go back to my auditor and say, why did you say not to sign this?
Yes.
You know, I have to pay him like a hundred or $200 to answer that question because I can't figure it out.
Well, I feel like if he told us not to sign it, he should have given us a reason.
Right.
So it looks like my.
The reason is because I said, if you can make an assessment for free, please do so. So that was his free assessment. Don't sign it.
All right, so I think there's more work. I'm going to table this now. More, more work to be had.
So my actual franchise fee is $5.30 a month.
Free, yeah.
For me.
For you.
Just for me, for what it is.
And somebody else may say, if it goes to $6, I'm upset.
I'm just, I just, it gives an order of magnitude.
We're not suggesting raising it. We're suggesting lowering it.
Right, I'm starting to give a lot of magnitude about what we're talking about here.
Right, with the Redhook agreement, it is potentially lowered. With our agreement, it stays the same with the longer.
And if it's potentially lowered by like 10 to 15%, so reducing that $5 by 10 to 15% brings it to 450.
So we would, our revenue would go from like 68 grand to like 68 grand.
And it's all dependent on the number of subscribers.
Right, so your bill areas where you live.
Okay, all right.
Done, right.
All right.
Answer the question. All right, so.
Are you good?
It's been a long time talking about.
Yes.
No, because I, I have that, I don't have a.
Wait, I got one, hang on. I got one more thing on the agenda and it'll take two seconds.
Okay, because Karen was, you have two more things that we want to get going.
I know, she can stay.
I'm staying, sorry.
You can stay.
I just have a. I just have a.
I know, we'll get done. So on the agenda with new fire department members, I just want to announce, uh, there's been an update to the two vacant positions that have been filled. Right, Thomas Biker has been appointed to Second Lieutenant of Fire and Ryan Ferber, who also is, um, the firefighter of the year award, has been appointed as Second Lieutenant of EMS. Uh, this appointment is for the 2023. I'd like to make a motion to accept these two people as officers in the fire department.
Second.
Right, yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Done.
Really good guys. Uh, 2023 election polling?
Yes, so we, the board is required to pass a resolution at least 60 days prior to the election that names the location and the polling hours. So I am requesting that you approve for the March 21st, 2023 village election, that the village hall, 76 East Market Street, Rhinebeck, New York, uh, is the polling place and the polling hours are from noon until 9:00 PM.
So moved.
Just a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, we have a new agenda item.
Yeah, this just came in to me, um, the other day. So this is, I just emailed it to you. It's a task order from Time Bond. It is everything that I need from them to do the town planning board approval process for the compost facility at the highway department. And I'm bringing it up now urgently because, um, that next town planning board meeting that we want to get to is February 6th. And, um, this is, oops, uh, $3,500.
Does that come from the grant line or is it?
So you want to talk about the escrow part of it?
Right, okay, so, um, a couple of things. Um, the escrow that the town planning board usually requires, I submit a letter to the planning board and to the town board requesting that we forego escrow so that any fees incurred in this planning board process, we can pay for and then be reimbursed by our, um, by one of our grants. The DEC grant says, don't start incurring costs until your, your contract is fully executed. But the other grant from the foundation, um, we can use, we can reimburse ourselves for that.
Great.
So we can cover this from the foundation?
Yeah.
Right. And then we can also use possibly Time Bond, who's done the work, to be able to fulfill those needs as well.
Right.
Great.